Call meeting to order at seven o'clock. Uh, please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez?
Here.
Trustee Reyes Plummer?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Lightford?
Here.
Trustee Pepper?
Here.
Trustee Brandon?
Here.
Mayor Booker?
Here.
Mayor Booker.
All right, we are going to, uh, stand for the invitation from our pastor Lorenzo Ender. And we'll do the place of allegiance following, and then we'll read the Maywood Fair Confession.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we pause to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to assemble here. As we conduct business on tonight, we have sent your Holy Spirit reigning in this place. Uh, we thank you that your covering sits on our elected officials and every resident and first responder in our communities. God, as we conduct business, we have said it's done in the spirit of peace. We thank you in advance for what you're doing as you advance this community forward and surrounding communities as well. We thank you for these things in the morning. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, going to the village of Maywood Fair Confession. Father, we come boldly before your throne of grace interceding for the village of Maywood. We pray for your spiritual awakening in the hearts and Maywood, Maywood residents. Thank you for preserving, preserving this village and bringing restoration, wholeness, and generational wealth to our communities. Restore this generation's faith, passion, and ignite in them a holy fire that will destroy every demonic influence. Thank you, Father, that you have delivered the village of Maywood out of the power of darkness and translated into the kingdom of your dear Son. We bind every strong man that is held Maywood bound. We execute divine judgment against the forces of darkness and cancel every satanic operation. We thank you that the works of the enemy are destroyed and declare that Jesus is Lord. We plead, plead the blood of Jesus over Maywood and its residents and declare that heavenly angels have been given charge over this villages to protect it. We thank you that the body of Christ has been released as laborers have been sent to Maywood preaching the gospel, bringing healing to the brokenhearted, deliverance to the captives, and liberty and restoration to the bruised. Let the outpouring of the Holy Spirit consume them with wisdom, prosperity, truth, love, joy, peace, righteousness, faithfulness, and holiness that will manifest God's kingdom and bring forth revival in the land. Father, we know your word would not return to us void, and we accomplish everything that we've been sent to the village of Maywood to accomplish in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, so we are going to move on to approval of minutes for a special board meeting of the special board of trustees Tuesday, August seventeenth and Tuesday, August thirty-first. Item A, five A, approval of special board meeting minutes of the board of trustees Tuesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. All right, there is, uh, motion to approve by trustee Lightford, second by trustee Brandon. And with questions, there is one motion that needs, I mean, there's one edit that needs to be made on section five where we talk about the American Rescue Plan Act funding, where it says the one point four million to be three point four million. Three point one four. Yeah, three point one four. All right, please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez?
Aye.
Trustee Reyes Plummer?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Lightford?
Aye.
Trustee Pepper?
Aye.
Trustee Brandon?
Aye.
And Mayor Booker?
Aye.
Motion here.
All right, B, approval of special village board meeting minutes Tuesday, August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one at six P M. I need a motion.
To approve. Need a motion approved.
Motion by trustee Lightford, I need a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Reyes Plummer, are there any questions? All right, please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez?
Aye.
Trustee Reyes Plummer?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Lightford?
Aye.
Trustee Pepper?
Aye.
Trustee Brandon?
Aye.
Mayor Booker?
Aye.
Motion here.
Great, all right, so we are going to go into oath, reports, proclamations, announcements, and, um, appointments. So, looking at item six A, Village of Maywood Proclamation on National Hispanic Heritage Month, two thousand and twenty-one, presented by Mayor Nathaniel George Booker. So I'm just gonna read the proclamation. Uh, during the National Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize that Hispanic heritage is an American heritage. We see it in every aspect of our national life, on our television, on our movie screens, and in the music that moves our feet and the food that we enjoy. We benefit from the many contributions of the Hispanic scientists working in the labs across the country to help us fight COVID-nineteen and the doctors and nurses on the front lines caring for our people's health. Our nation is represented by Hispanic diplomats who share our values in countries all over the world and strengthen our military members and their families who served and sacrificed in the United States. The village of Maywood is represented by Hispanic elected officials, and our children are taught by Hispanic teachers. Our future will be shaped by the Hispanic engineers who are working to develop new technology that will help us grasp on clean energy future and the skilled union labor workers that grow on it. National Hispanic Heritage Month is an important reminder of how many strengths we draw on as a nation from our immigrant roots and our values as a nation of immigrants. Our administration is focused on making equity a priority and ensuring that Hispanics are front and center in all of our efforts to improve the lives of working families across the village of Maywood. During National Hispanic Heritage Month, we also recognize that America cannot succeed unless Hispanic families and communities succeed, sharing equally in benefits of our recovery and our investments. Our critical key to moving Maywood forward together is ensuring that the Hispanic communities also benefit from investment in roads, clean water, and broadband, as well as across to early education and other resources that support working families and improve educational outcomes. We must all continue to fight to protect the sacred right to vote and provide a pathway to citizenship for undocumented Hispanics, especially our Dreamers, temporarily protected status holders, farmworkers, and essential workers. Through the desperately needed immigration reform, creating a pathway to citizenship is at the top priority of focusing on sharing for that in our, at the administration of the United States, not only because this benefits the nation, but it also benefits the village of Maywood as a whole. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nathaniel George Booker, being president of the village of Maywood by virtue of authority vested in me by the state of Illinois, do hereby acknowledge September fifteenth through October fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Month. I call upon public officials, educators, librarians, and all Americans to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. And witness therefore of, I am here unto set my hands forth on the fourteenth day of September in the year of the land of two thousand and twenty-one and the independence of the United States and the village of Maywood for two hundred and forty years. Forty-six, I'm sorry. Okay? Yes, trustee, uh, Sanchez.
Uh, last year, uh, same time, we flew the Mexican. Same year last time we flew the Mexican, uh, flag at our village hall, was wondering if you could do that again this year?
We'll get that up right away.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so the other announcements in regards, uh, that's not mentioned on the board meeting. I know there's been a lot of conversation, uh, in regards to Smart Routes. So Smart Routes is a program that provides safe passage, um, across the Madison corridor for Washington Dual Language Academy as well as Urban Middle School. So just wanted to provide an update to everyone. So the Coalition for Spiritual and Public Leadership came to our administration a little over a month ago to talk about Smart Routes as it initially started as a pilot program in two thousand and nineteen prior to COVID. Uh, moving forward into those discussions, we presented a budget for an intergovernmental agreement with Proviso Township as well as School District Eighty-nine to make sure that the funding of the program could continue for this school year. And looking at that, we now have met with School District Eighty-nine as well as the Proviso Township, and will be, with consent from the board, going into an intergovernmental agreement with the Smart Routes that, uh, we have identified funding for through working in partnership with the township and School District Eighty-nine. So for those who are interested in the process that we're going through to get Smart Routes activated in the village, um, October fourteenth at six P M, School District Eighty-nine is having their board meeting at nine oh six Walton Street, which is their administrative building. Then the village of Maywood, this will be at our Public Safety and Police Accountability Committee. That will be September twenty-ninth at seven P M as a discussion. And then Proviso Township will have it on their board meeting, uh, Monday, October fourth at five thirty P M. So just wanted to share that information that we have. Um, we're looking forward to getting into that intergovernmental agreement and looking forward to get that started as soon as we go through all of our proper processes.
Ma'am?
Trustee Brandon?
Uh, and this item is going to be going to the, uh, pit school accountability and parenting committee for review?
It's going to Public Safety and Police Accountability.
Uh, uh, no, I'm saying the financial piece, you just mentioned that, um, money was found.
Right.
It's a, it's a, it's a, uh...
Sure, if you would have heard what I said, the funding is through school, the township. So if you want to go to the township board meeting, you're more than welcome to do that. That is on October fourth for the funding, and then for funding, if you're interested in funding, you can also go to School District Eighty-nine's board meeting, October fourteenth at six P M, to focus on funding. The intergovernmental agreement will focus on all three communities and all three governing bodies partnering and understanding the, the necessary, the necessity of the program. But if you're thinking about funding, you can go to School District Eighty-nine's board meeting, or you can go to the township board meeting.
I, I know what you're saying, and it sounds good, but what I'm saying is, I know the figure of agreement, uh, it included all of those participating, um, entities, um, contributing financially to it. So, um, they're not taking any financial contributions from the village, is that what you're saying?
That is exactly what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm just making sure, because I just know the form of agreement that we had includes the village of Maywood having a financial contribution in it, and that's why I mentioned, uh, it goes to the...
Right, so, to focus on Smart Routes for the village of Maywood, Public Safety and Police Accountability Committee meeting is, uh, September twenty-ninth at seven P M.
That was it.
All right.
Appreciate that.
All right. Okay, so, financial, seven, finance management report, eight, discussion on the village of Maywood, warrant list number two zero zero five one seven through September fifteenth in the amount of two million, two hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-four dollars, four cents. Are there any questions? All right, B, discussion of the village of Maywood open invoices report as of September fifteenth in the amount of seventy-six thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars, forty-three cents. Are there any questions? All right, C, discussion of September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, monthly financial report. Are there any questions? All right, eight, thank you. Village resident report agenda items, none. All right, we will go into nine, public comment. Uh, public comment, you have three minutes to provide public comment. You do not have to give your address, but you do need to give your name.
Bibbs?
Hello, good night.
Hello.
Hello. My reasoning of coming here has been, um, very frustrating and a little irritating. Uh, I, um, trying to find out, what is taking you so long to get the blind spot, um, completed? This was approved with the item number seven that you all approved, um, back in May? On May the twenty-sixth, that was, uh, presented by, at the time, Chief Tally. Why can't that, um, block, that, that, uh, issue be completed? It is very detailed in the approval, and I'd like to know what is the holdup? I have asked about this for four years. Two years, you were trusted to approve it. I've talked to you personally, I've talked to your village manager. The village manager stated that she would monitor it, and she didn't see a need because there wasn't enough parking in Maywood to move back to parks. I have not talked to her anymore since, but I did before. I talked to her, tell her that it was approved, and my guess is that she did not take the time to look and see something that I had to do for her. So if you can please give me a date and tell me when this can be done, because it is very crucial. We have almost had terrible accidents because we have to pull out into the traffic in order to turn east or west on Twentieth Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya Harris?
Good evening, Mayor Booker.
Good evening.
Village manager Wells Armstrong, this is the trustees of the board. My name is Sandra Harris, and I am a resident of Maywood. I am a member of the Coalition for Spiritual and Public Leadership and a leader with the Safety and Violence Prevention Committee. Five years ago, my husband and I decided to purchase a home in the village to give our children a better opportunity. Although Maywood has its share of issues, we wanted to provide a space for them where they can think clearly and enjoy the evening. Along with moving to the village, I also had to transfer my students to the, uh, urban school. As you can imagine, transferring to a new school is tough, and my husband and I wanted to make a transition, transition risk as possible. We live within walking distance of Urban, and we were happy that our son didn't have to travel too far. What we didn't anticipate was the uptick of community violence along Seventeenth Avenue. Almost daily, my son witnessed fights among students, anecdotes, acts of violence, and public drunkenness. I wish that Smart Routes were available during his eighth grade year. Smart Routes is a program that works. During this tight run in two thousand and nineteen, there was a significant reduction in violence around Urban. Fights were reduced and bullying, bullying was addressed, meaningful conflict resolution, and the escalation continues. Had this program been around when my son was a student at Urban, he would have been more likely to participate in after-school programs. Instead, he wanted to go home as fast as possible because he didn't feel safe walking home. My son is currently at junior ed provising East, and I can honestly see the benefits of this program for high school students as well. Just knowing that the community cares for the safety as they travel from school to home, this reality can become true if the board funds this program. Just two weeks ago, while working from home, I heard several high caliber shots during dismissal. Research shows that Smart Routes reduce bodies in our community. We all are here for the betterment of Maywood, and we need the village to continue to provide funding for Smart Routes. What a beautiful way to show Maywood's future, its children, that we care for them and their safety. On behalf of the parents of school-aged children, please reconnect to Smart Routes. The village should provide financial support as it did in two thousand and nineteen for this crucial initiative. Thank you.
All right.
Reiterate me if I mispronounced your name, Emily?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Anadi. I've been a resident for thirteen years, and I'm also a board member for the Coalition for Spiritual and Public Leadership. I have four children, two of them currently attend, uh, District Eighty-nine schools, and I am one of the parents who advocated first Smart Routes back in two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and nineteen, my daughter plays in high school, and is seventh grader at Urban Middle School. I would drive my daughter to and from school every day because I didn't feel it was safe for her to walk home. On some occasions while I was waiting for her, I witnessed fights and dangerous traffic incidents. She even saw a student get hit by a car passing the street a block away from the school. I know my daughter didn't feel safe walking home, so when the opportunity for Smart Routes came up, I knew it was the best solution, not just for me, but for many other parents who don't have the option of driving their kids to school. In the fall of two thousand and nineteen, when the program started, I was able to see a difference. I started to occasionally let my daughter walk home. On the occasions when I did pick her up, I did know there's more children who are walking. I know a couple of children who, like my daughter, started to walk instead of being driven to school. I got to witness their interaction between the kids and one of the Smart Routes workers. It was wonderful to see the kids laughing with him and high-fiving them, uh, on their way to school. Having trusted adults from the community that the kids can recognize as neighbors, friends, or parents makes Smart Routes better. Now, in two thousand and twenty-one, my son is a seventh grader at Urban, and things have come back to feeling unsafe. In the first couple of weeks of school, there have already been fights. Some have even been posted on social media. There is still a great need for Smart Routes. Having trusted adults on the streets deter kids from their aggressive behavior, but it also deters perpetrators from targeting our children. I know many parents feel we need Smart Routes, but more than, most importantly, our children feel the need. They want to feel safe and know that someone is looking after them when walking home. We cannot wait until a child gets hit by a car or harassed by a stranger to take action. That is why I am, I am asking the board to fund Smart Routes. Smart Routes is a program that was working. I, as a parent, can attest to that, and I am sure that others here will agree. We always say our children come first, so it's time to show them that they do by having their safety as our priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa Jackson?
Good evening.
Hello.
Can you all hear me? You're gonna hear me?
No.
No, can you hear me?
Yes.
There we go, awesome. Good evening, beautiful people. It is lovely to be here with you today. My name is Vanessa Jackson. I am also a member of the Coalition for Spiritual and Public Leadership. My children do not live here in Maywood. I don't let my children walk in Maywood.
Me either.
We need to fund this program. I love you presenting that we're supporting this program, but this program actually needs our funding and support.
Yes.
We cannot pray away demons, we can say that, but we need to stand up and stand with our community.
Yes.
I have been a business owner here for twenty years, and I would love to continue to grow and develop businesses here, but if we're not standing with the most vulnerable members of our community, how are we gonna continue to grow every other aspect of our community, right?
Yep.
And I understand that this program only currently supports two of our schools. From a business perspective, that's called a minimum viable product.
Yep.
This, this program has proven itself, and we can continue to grow this program and support our children at all of our schools. And through the summer, our kids should be playing in the playground here. They should feel safe to do those things. And that means that we have to put our money where our mouth is and actually put the funding. We can't stand here and continue to look for Proviso and all these other people to support our students. We have to find that money, and we have to allocate it because the community is demanding it.
Yep, yep.
We are the people, we are the village, and this is where we want our budgetary money spent on our children.
All right.
That is all for public comment.
Uh, thank you. All right, so, uh, for Ms. Bibbs, um, village manager will be followed up with regards to...
A.C., acting chief.
Uh... Could you give?
Yeah, okay.
So just for the record, I did have a Zoom meeting with Ms. Bibbs and several residents who were blacked out on Zoom, so I didn't see who was actually on it. That was on August twentieth. Um, I did, um, email the police chief, Andy Mayer, to, um, inquire, because at the time, the information I was given was that there was something approved by the board, uh, to be rectified. Um, she didn't give me any detail on what that solution was. So I believe that you indicated that you all, there was a conversation to paint lines to stop parking altogether, but it, I think there was some question about putting the lines in as opposed to holding, um, the residents accountable for the bushes. And then A.C. Willis was looking into the matter. A.C.?
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Bibbs is here. If you recall, I had a Zoom meeting with her and a group of residents on August twentieth, and I emailed you and the mayor. Um, Chief Tally, I guess, presented some plan to address a blind spot on Twentieth Avenue. Do you recall this?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, follow up?
So, so, how's everybody doing?
Right.
Thank you, A.C.
So, uh, the former chief, he actually presented this to the board. Again, I can't even call it in at this time right now, but yeah, he presented this to the board for consideration to go to the Traffic and Safety Committee. Uh, myself and trustee Pepper's actually talked about this, and we're gonna try to come up with a plan, uh, to try to, uh, alleviate some of that issue over there. That's when we got to get BPW to help us out with some of the stuff that we're gonna come up to try to add by.
Uh, trustee, is this on, uh, your agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so, um, in regards to the Coalition for Spiritual and Public, uh, Leadership, again, I told you here, everything that everyone is saying. The conversation that has been happening with the Proviso Township, as well as the village, as well as School District Eighty-nine, is taken into consideration that when you look at the, the School District Eighty-nine, you have Merrill's Park and you have Broadview, that do not pay for their crossing guards. As the village of Maywood, we budget a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year for our crossing guards already. When we talked about funding availability, the township already has funding for public safety, reduction of, reduction of prevention, things like that. So does School District Eighty-nine. So with them providing the funding and us going into the intergovernmental agreement, is identifying a fully funded program. When we think about everything that we're focusing on right now as a new administration, we're focusing on the homeland security and public safety, we're focusing on funding for emergency response collaborative so that our police officers are responding to actual nine-one-one emergencies and looking into having more professionals such as mental health specialists, uh, safety specialists, certified professionals for families and things like that. So looking at funding in regards to that, that's what we're also looking at. Um, when you look at School District Eighty-nine in Merrill's Park, you have an officer friendly that's at all of the Merrill's Park schools. So we've been discussing the fact that when we discussed this with School District Eighty-nine, the village of Merrill's Park fully funds that officer friendly, that's not a joint financial partnership that they do. So we're looking to reintroduce that. It was in the village of Maywood, it went away. So that's one thing that we're looking at, that we as a village will have to fully fund because Merrill's Park fully funds that project. Um, and looking at other funding aspects, we also used to have an officer friendly at Proviso East. Currently, that is something that is fully funded by the village, that would be fully funded by the village of Maywood because in the past it was fully funded. So we're looking at that partnership with Proviso East. We're also looking at, uh, financing and bringing programming back. We were approved for violence prevention and youth grant funding. Um, so we focusing on different programs such as bringing back like the DARE program, different things like that within the school districts. We are looking at, um, exploring programs that focuses on those in middle schools and high schools. But we also have to look at the fact that, uh, we did get a request for additional, uh, safety guards, so we're looking at adding those on. We do currently have the five part-time police officers that we are, have identified funding for, that we are budgeting for. So one of those are through with their background process, if I'm not mistaken. And then there's another three that are going through their background process, so this is additional funding in regards to public safety that we are funding right now. We're also looking at, uh, submission of grants that have been done in regards to providing more full-time police officers as a possibility, so that is other things that we're doing in regards to public safety. Um, we are also looking at updating our police cameras throughout the village because they're over two decades old. We also have to look at funding for, uh, new radios that have been mandated by the state that we have to do. That's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment. And then we also have to identify funding for, uh, police officer vests with shot spotters so that when shots do happen, they're able to identify and pinpoint where those shots are happening. That's an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we're also looking at plate scanners to scan driver's license, uh, I'm sorry, plate license of cars as they're going. So that is, I believe, a fourteen thousand per scanner investment. So when you look at all-inclusive of what we've added in regards to what we're identifying funding for, it's nearly two million dollars of things that we're looking at that are not currently in the budget. So the CS, the Smart Routes, the hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, there is funding for it. Um, but we are also focusing not only on the two schools, but overall collaborative aspect of public safety. Um, when you think about also, we've also been talking with the township as well. There's funding of the American Rescue Plan funding that we are to get, so we've been looking at that. So we've been looking at that funding. We also have been in conversation with the Cook County Commissioner's Office in regards to expanding the smart route program to not only be for School District 89, but also for School District 88.
Saying the right thing, saying the right thing.
I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to let you guys know. We are most certainly focused on public, um, public safety. Um, I'm a resident, I'm a homeowner. I have nieces and nephews that are here every other weekend hanging out in my backyard. I don't even have a fenced backyard, so they run it around. So I feel you, I understand you. I've spoken to every principal, all of them want smart routes. Um, so, we're working on it. Uh, funding, budgeting, you know, our budget season is in talks right now. We, the new fiscal year starts in May, so smart routes wasn't presented until the end of July. So it wasn't a part of this fiscal year, but it is funded. It is a program that's gonna happen. We just gotta go through the process. Thank you, guys.
Let's get it done.
All right, so, next. Village Manager's Report 10A. Discussion and Consideration Regarding Proposed On-Street Parking Along Warren Street Between Fifth Avenue and Fourth Avenue As It Pertains To Recent Voice Concerns Regarding Parking In The General Facinity Of Fifth Avenue Business District. Information provided by Bill Peter Hansen of Hancock Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
This is the item we spoke about at the committee of the whole meeting. In your packet, you've got a detailed memo and exhibit summarizing what we spoke about. So again, um, this involves maximizing parking along Warren Street from Fifth Avenue to Fourth Avenue. The, uh, after meeting with staff, the recommendation was to include that parking as well as adhere to the RDA agreement with, um, Hurricane Howie. So, the initial plan design included the non-street parking, um, from Fifth Avenue to the alley east of Fifth Avenue. This will extend it all the way to Fourth Avenue. Hancock Engineering is providing the redesign at no cost to the village. And the additional cost to the village involved the difference in construction funds, which is an increase of $94,000. Uh, that can be included with the ongoing project this fall, and be completed this fall. And later on in the, um, agenda, you have the ordinance to approve this. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Are there any questions? Thank you. All right, B. Discussion and Consideration Regarding NPD Proposal Number 006. Requesting Services Of Ms. Neely Pittman, Who retired from the Maywood Police Department earlier this year in 2021, An Assisting And Training Of The New Executive Assistant For The Chief Of Police. The recommendation is that Ms. Pittman be paid $20 an hour for four hours per day for a total of five days.
Motion to approve.
Sorry?
Motion to approve by Trustee Brandon, seconded by Trustee Lightford. Are there any questions? Please call the room.
Trustee Sanchez?
Aye.
Trustee Reyes Perez?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Blackmore?
Aye.
Trustee Peppers?
Aye.
Trustee Brandon?
Aye.
Mayor Booker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Perfect. All right, C. Review And Consideration Of Village Manager Memo Date September 17, 2021, Regarding An Addendum To The Employee Contract Vehicle Allowance. So with item C, we're looking at the contract that was written in regards to when we first hired the village manager. When the village manager first initially started, she did not start driving the village-owned vehicle because she lived without, uh, outside of the 15-mile radius requirement that's in her contract. So during this time that she's now been on board, the contract that we signed did say that we would have to discuss this addendum at the point in time that she did identify housing within the 15-mile radius requirement for her. There was a village manager vehicle that is now in Community Development Department. The Community Development Department's vehicle died. So at this time, instead of budgeting or reviewing the budget and amending the budget to add a new village vehicle to the budget that currently is, the village manager has agreed to continue driving her own personal car. But with that being said, with her driving her personal car, she cannot have it insured by the village the way that a car would be insured by the village. She cannot receive her gas, uh, card the way that she would have gotten if it was a village-owned vehicle. Um, she can also not receive maintenance assistance if she's driving her own personal vehicle. So what we're looking at initially, it was $200 that she was receiving. So now, because she will, the goal is for her to continue driving her own personal vehicle for the next seven months to get us into the new fiscal year budget, we're asking for the addendum to increase to $500, which would cover costs of insurance, maintenance, and gas that normally would be a part of the budget if she had the village vehicle that she is due to have. So we look forward to identifying funds for the next fiscal year for a village budget, for a village vehicle, but we currently don't have one. So, um, with that being said, are there any questions before we go and keep looking for a motion?
Ma'am?
Trustee Brandon?
Yeah, it's a few things. So I really wish this conversation would have happened at the committee of the whole versus at, uh, a board meeting so that we could have had some discussion regarding this matter. And so my issue with this particular item is really, uh, of course, I understand that the manager needs a car. But there's a car that belongs to the manager. And so my first question is, the car that Mr. Norfleet had, who made the decision to give that to, um, our department? And the follow-up is, is... Was it the manager who made the decision? Or was it you who made the decision to give Mr. Norfleet's car to the Community Development Department? What purpose are they using the car for? Um, and, and, and who made the decision? Um, I'm just a little bit frustrated simply because I thought this was going to be held to the committee of the whole meeting for discussion. Um, and so I see that we're gonna, you know, try to push the two through tonight. But again, it, it, for me, there's a car that exists that this board purchased for the village manager. That is a car that the village manager should be using. Or take their car and figure out, you know, something else if the car is not comfortable enough. But utilize that car as a community development needed a car. There are a couple of things that should happen. They should have made us aware as it was an emergency issue. It should have been brought to this board so that we could then figure out a solution for it, but not someone making the decision on village-owned property to, to just do whatever they want to do with it when this board approved and purchased a car for the village manager. That is a car that should be utilized for the village manager at this particular time until we get to the budget season to discuss, uh, whether or not we want to, um, A, purchase a new car for the village manager or do something different. But just again, it's about process as a car that belongs to the village manager that the village manager should be driving. Uh, the Community Development Department needed a vehicle. They should have made us aware if it was an emergency matter or waited until the budget season to bring it to the Fiscal Accountability and Transparency Committee with their proposal or what, what their other needs were. It's just all about making sure that we go through the right channels, go through the right processes, and do what is, um, do what is right. The village manager has a car. The village manager should be driving their car. And the Community Development Department needed a car. It should have been brought to this board decision so that we could have made a collective decision on the matter and not just be operating off a wire in regards to where village cars and things like that is. It just don't make sense to me because the village manager has a car.
Okay. So in thinking about that, the question was, what does Community Development do with their car? So one, it's not giving them a car, it's replacing the car that they had that died.
Who gave it to them?
Trustee Brandon, you asked your question, I'm gonna respond to your question. The car currently is in the shop. The car is out of the shop now. They have not started driving the car because there were issues with the car. The village manager is the one who handles day-to-day operations. So operationally, she is the one that has authorized the Community Development Department to drive the car. I don't handle day-to-day operations, so I as the mayor cannot say, "We're gonna use the car to village, to the Community Development Department", unless we bring it to a board for a vote. Since the vehicle is part of day-to-day operations and the village manager handles the day-to-day operations, she does not need to come for the board to handle a vehicle. The other aspect of thought process, even when you say, "Why do they need a car?" Everyone who drives around Village of Maywood know that we have eight areas that are blighted, that are commercial investment that we're not investing in right now. So with having a new Director of Community Development, with having a new direct, uh, new code and zoning coordinator, with establishing a business retention and engagement coordinator, they need a car. And the other reality is, even when we look at Community Development right now, investments that are taking place in the Village of Maywood just from the enterprise zone itself total $60 million worth of investment that is coming into the Village of Maywood and projects going on right now. The Community Development Department has to oversee those things. When we're talking about planning the commercial corridor of First Avenue, Fifth Avenue, Madison, St. Charles, Lake Street, 19th, 17th, Community Development handles that planning that we as a board vote on, but they are the day-to-day operators that focus on that, that need a car. So, one, the village manager is the one who gave the directive for them to have the car, because I can't give that directive. Two, they need to focus on building our community, which is why we separated Community Development away from building and code. Because the problem was, Community Development was being so focusing on building and code, they didn't have time to focus on the planning and strategy of the Village of Maywood. So now that that is their full focus and they're a completely different department and a completely different area of Village Hall, they need to get out in the streets and bring in investors. They're having meetings with investors, they're traveling to investors. We talk about wanting a grocery store, we gotta go find the grocery store people. We talk about wanting a sit-down restaurant that you can have a drink at and eat a meal at. They have to go find those people. So, they can't just sit in their office and do that. So Community Development is focusing on bringing economic prosperity to the Village of Maywood. They need a car. You say, give them back the car, give, have them give back the car to the village manager, but the same issue is still. So now, instead of one department driving a car that has three people in it, you'll have three different people looking for a stipend because now they're all three using their personal car. So realistically, the manager is agreeing to use her personal vehicle simply because it's not in the budget to buy a new car. So if the village, if the Community Development's car didn't break down and die finally because it kept breaking down, she would have the vehicle. But as the day-to-day operator, COO of this village, she did what was best for the department in her leadership. She is still doing what's best and thinking about the Village of Maywood by not saying, "We need to find money in the budget for her vehicle", which is what we will do in the next fiscal year. But we do need to acknowledge, gas, insurance, and maintenance would be taken care of by the Village of Maywood if the Village of Maywood had a vehicle for her. So to take a car back, it still leaves now three employees needing personal vehicle stipends.
Mayor, that sounds good, but I don't know how sound it is. It's about the process. If a department needed a car, the board should have been made aware that any department needed a car so that we could have collectively come up with a decision on what to do about the matter. Um, and what, in regard to the car just being given away, because the car was purchased for the village manager to utilize. And now we have a situation where you're saying the village manager gave the car to the Community Development Department, who we didn't even know needed a car because the process is not being followed. This is all, all I'm saying, the process is not being followed, and now we are coming back asking for something that wasn't a part of the plan and to make an amendment or, um, with, with the contract just because we gave away a car that belonged to the manager. Just like I stated. It sounds good. I don't know how sound it is. I don't think it's sound at all. I think the village manager needs to operate in a part of this board purchase of the manager. If the Community Development Department needed a car, they should have presented themselves before this board as it wasn't a part of their budget for us to then make a decision based on what their needs were. Not to come back in this matter and say, "Oh, well, this car was given to so-and-so." No, that's not how this work. That's not how this work. It, it's gotta be about processes and procedures. And this is just out of line, and like I stated, Mayor, it's sounding good, but it's not sound at all. The, the, even the manager, she came and, and to, to this board and stated, "This is what the need is, um, and, and this is what the plan is." Um, so that we could have all been part of the conversation versus making a decision and doing something and then coming back to us, you know, trying to change it up.
Thank you, Trustee.
It don't make any sense to me, like I said.
So, let me just...
Not sounding all sound good, but not sound.
So let's just read the contract that you voted on and agreed to.
I didn't agree to anything, I didn't vote on it.
Okay. So, Mileage Reimbursement For Business Travel Village-Owned. While the village manager resides outside of the 15-mile radius of the village corporate boundaries, the village agrees to provide the village manager with a monthly commuter benefit allowance to assist with the daily cost of commuting to the, to and from the village in the amount of $200 per month. This benefit shall terminate once she moves into a residence within the 15-mile radius requirement. So she has moved, October 1st, she has moved. So that's why we're doing this, because essentially, her agreement of the $200 terminates October 1st when she moves. We're at September 21st. The goal was to give her 12 months to move. She moved in four. She's an overachiever, she does a good job. So, when thinking about it from this perspective, Trustee, she handles the day-to-day operations because that's what she's been hired to do. She cannot come to this board every time a decision needs to be made because that is what her salary pays for, for her to be a decision-maker. So in thinking about what you're saying, and honestly, your time is up, so you've spoken twice. You don't need to lean forward to the mic.
No, I'm telling you, I need to say it.
Okay, so thinking about it from that perspective, either way, the vehicle, the village needs two vehicles, we currently have one. So if you want the Community Development Department to take the car back, we're saying now we're gonna give three stipends? That doesn't make sense. So I'm gonna turn it over to Manager Wilson.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Um, the night that I was sworn in on June 8th, and even before that, it was made very clear to me that there was a residency requirement to work here. The board was very clear on that expectation, so were residents. In fact, Trustee Brandon asked me the night that I was appointed, "Do you plan to live in the Village of Maywood?" I said, "No, I do not." I did not mislead this board. My husband works in Will County. We both were looking for a medium, so that we're both driving equal distance. Right now, I am driving three hours a day to and from work, putting 140 miles on my car. I told the mayor, when we talked about this, that I did not think it was appropriate for me to put that type of mileage on a Village of Maywood vehicle. I did not think that was the right thing to do. So that's how we came up with the $200 a month stipend. In my contract, it says that when I move, we close on our home October 1st. I have, we have looked for a home every weekend since I've been hired. The market has been insane. You see a house go on the market today at 8 o'clock, and they want the best offer by 7:30 that night. It has been insane. So at the time, when the Community Development Department made me aware that they were having an issue, they didn't feel safe in the 1990-something vehicle that they had access to, I did not feel, I didn't have rights to take the car because I had not, I wasn't a resident, I had moved into the residency. I didn't know if that was gonna happen in October, I didn't know if it was gonna happen in February, I didn't know if it was gonna happen in May. At the time they approached me, I did not have entitlement to that car because I was still outside of the 15-mile radius. So being a supervisor and seeing a need, I provided them the car. The car, a car has not been purchased specifically for me as the village manager, it was Mr. Norfleet's car. Then I was informed that the car was not operational because the seat would not adjust, and there was another issue. I directed the acting director of that department to put that vehicle in the shop so that they would have it. They drive, they meet developers, they go to meetings. Um, uh, the acting director will be going to the IML conference. They do need to utilize a car. So at the time that I made an operational decision, which a director does not come to the board for those issues, they come to the village manager because that is what the village manager does, they oversee operations. So I gave her direction to put the car in the shop and that they could use the car, because at the time, I wasn't even, I didn't have a, a deal on a house yet. So I wasn't entitled to the car. So being mindful of the finances, and I think I've demonstrated that in the 16 weeks that I have been here, we have reformatted how... we have reformatted how we do the budget. We go over the budget every single month. I am very mindful of the finances of this community. I looked at the budget, I spoke with the finance director, trying to figure out the least impact on the current budget that was passed before I got here that expires April thirty, twenty-twenty-two. So being responsible, I know we don't have money to pay forty to fifty thousand dollars for a new car. I know that. A lease is probably gonna be anywhere from six to eight hundred dollars. So I looked at the line item that's already in my budget, that this board approved for vehicle maintenance of thirty-five hundred dollars. And I said, I asked the attorney, I'm the one that brought this up, because I know I'm moving October first, I'm trying to be accountable. I don't ever want somebody to say, she took a stipend after October first, and she moved October first. So I was being accountable. I brought it to the attorney's attention, I said, hey, I'm gonna be moving October first. According to my contract that was approved by the board, I am no longer entitled to a two hundred dollar stipend. As a result of that, because we're in a position that we can't get another car, and another car is needed, we need another car for building and code as well, which we'll, we'll discuss that at the next fiscal year budget. Um, because we're not in the position, can you collect data? If you have any data on surrounding communities in the region, what do they do for the village manager? The attorney, Mike Jerusik, provided that to me, I provided that to the board. It had Brookfield, LaGrange, Westchester, several communities. They either provided a vehicle, or they gave a stipend, the average stipend was six thousand a year. So I asked for five hundred dollars. I'm asking for twenty-one hundred dollars out of my budget line item that's already approved by the board, there's thirty-five hundred allocated for that line item for vehicle maintenance. I haven't used any of it, because I haven't even provided a vehicle. So I asked for that to get to the end of this fiscal year, and then the board can discuss how they wanna move forward in the future. So I was being responsible to not impact this fiscal year budget that's already been approved by the board, and I was looking for the least impact to the budget, which would be a five hundred dollar stipend, not a eight hundred dollar lease payment or going out buying a car for forty to fifty thousand dollars. That was my intent. I brought this to the attention, because I was being accountable with my contract. I have honored my contract.
Are there any other questions?
Mayor.
And I, just, excuse me, I'm sorry. I did bring this to the attention of the trustee who oversees financial accountability and government transparency. I, I, this came to my attention that this was an issue over the weekend. Out of respect for the trustees, I tried not to contact them over the weekend, it could wait. I contacted, had a lengthy text conversation with, um, trustee Jones, asked for permission to come to the meeting last night and speak about it. I, I made myself available, I was at that committee meeting, I was not given the floor to speak about it. So I did attempt to go to the committee and speak about it.
Can you meet the trustee John?
Yeah, Mayor, uh, so, I think, since there is some discussion that, that needs to be had, uh, I think there's just some bigger conversations that need to have. One, we're just in a position where, uh, we have to, I mean, let's do an inventory of the cars that are unavailable right now, because they, they should be opable. And the fact that we don't have them opable, I think we just need to just think about this from a bigger perspective, uh, and what we're gonna do for the rest of this fiscal year, and then moving forward. So, uh, I think we should table this, uh, to our committee as a whole, and have a bigger discussion, just so we can figure out, not only is our village manager office, but, you know, we just mentioned building and code, I'm sure they need a, a car to, you know, do what they need to do, and then also, uh, our community development. Uh, so I think we have a, a bigger issue here, there's a little bit of discussion that needs to be had. Let's have the discussion, if we decide to provide a stipend, we will, um, uh, you know, accommodate from, you know, when, when, uh, when she moved until now, but, uh, my, my, my recommendation would be just maybe just discuss about this, um, a little further, um, just because there, there, there has been discussions in, you know, in fact, I've gotten a lot of feedback from the residents, I wanna be respectful. Uh, I, I will say, just to comment to our, uh, village manager, uh, you did reach out and you did ask, uh, to speak at our fiscal accountability and government transparency, uh, meeting. It wasn't on the agenda, I did say you could have a few minutes, I didn't recognize you on the floor, so that's, uh, my apology. So I say, let's, uh, table this to the committee as a whole meeting, let's feel good about it, uh, what decision that we're gonna make, uh, and then we'll, and, and then we'll just move from there. But then also, uh, just to kind of piggyback, the board decided, when we went to this structure, that there weren't gonna be any final decisions made until we had discussion. But this is just following our own process that we said that we would agree to. First, we're gonna have a discussion, and then it picks up unanimous decision, or go on the omnibus item, and they'll proceed. If there's one trustee that isn't comfortable with it, then of course, we'll have as a new business item, and then we'll vote on it. This item has not been discussed yet, let's just follow the process that we said we'll do, let's go to the committee as a whole, we'll iron all of it out, we'll feel good about it, and go from there. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, table this to our next committee as a whole meeting.
We just spent fifteen minutes.
Second.
There is a motion by trustee Jones, and a second by trustee, um, Brandon. Are there any colleagues table? Can you please call the roll?
Trustee Sanchez?
No.
Trustee Reyes Plummer?
No.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Lightford?
No.
Trustee Peppers?
Aye.
Trustee Brandon?
Aye.
Mayor Booker?
No.
Motion failed.
Motion failed, um, can we get a different motion? Again, I just wanted to be reminded, the twen, the thirty-five hundred dollar budget line item is currently in the fiscal year budget, so it's really not much to discuss. The, whoa, 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 it's in the budget for thirty-five hundred dollars, for, under the village manager's department, for vehicle use. What she is asking for, of the thirty-five hundred dollars, over seven months, while we get through the end of the fiscal year, twenty-one hundred dollars out of the five hundred dollars that's currently in the budget, is what she's asking for. So this is not something new. This is not a budget amendment, this is not money that has to be found in the budget. This doesn't need to go to another committee, because we're literally almost at twenty minutes discussing it. It's doing the right thing, and actually, my whole background is hospitality, right? So Bill Marriott always talks about, like, if you take care of the employee, they'll take care of the guest, right? This is the Village of Maywood doing their part to take care of our village manager as our employee, so that she can take care of the rest of the employees of the Village of Maywood, and so that she can take care of the Village of Maywood. This is not a budget amendment. Yes, trustee Lightford?
I don't feel that we should be micromanaging her. She's doing her job the best she can. What they're talking is micromanaging, watching everything she do, she's doing her job, we should be doing ours.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion, too, we don't have this.
To approve? Okay, so I have a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve, and I have a second, uh, motion to approve from trustee Lightford, and a second from trustee Reyes Plummer. Um, please call the board. Are there, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Jones.
Yeah, I'll give, I'll give one more time to comment. So I just wanna say, that a couple months ago, we said, our board agreed to that there weren't gonna be any final decisions made, until something is either discussed at a, at a committee level, committee as a whole, or, uh, on these trustee committees. But now we're, we're, we're basically saying that, that is not, that's, that, that's not true, that actually you can get a final decision the same day. There's three trustees that were willing to move it to, um, committee as a whole, which means almost half of our board wants to have further discussion. Why, why, why make this a four-three, like, both turmoil situation? Let's discuss it, like we said, like, your proposal, Mayor, this is your idea. Your idea was to committee as a whole, there is no final decision just made. Now, this, this is not an emergency, like, this, this is not something that we need to get done today. We can do this, and if we decide, okay, we're gonna move forward with the stipend, and then if we get this on October twentieth, then we will pro-rate whatever we owe her. This, this is about us working together. If there's discussions by three other trustees, if they wanna further discuss it, there's, there's no need to push this through. Discuss it, iron it out, this has been a, a huge community discussion, uh, that residents have had an issue, and let's have a respect to have a little bit further discussion. Just because you feel like it's, like, we ironed this out, we have it, like, there's three trustees that feel like, let's discuss this. This isn't just about one car, this isn't about one contract, this is about, there's several cars, but then there's several financial issues that we have. Let's, let's talk about it, let's discuss it, and then we move forward at the meeting, and then if, if we agree, it's on the omnibus, omnibus decision, and we feel comfortable about, about it. But why push it through right now, when it's apparent that there's, you know, different thoughts on how to look at it? Let's just talk about it further at the next meeting, and then we'll make a final decision, it's not a big deal. This isn't an emergency, this does not need to get done today. She has not officially moved yet, she's under contract, she mentioned she's under contract, that's the only one first. That happened, like I said, it's a crazy market, anything that happens, we don't have to, we, we, we don't have to make a decision right now. Let's discuss it, let's iron it out, like we said we wanted to, um, and then that's my recommendation.
So, um, one thing I will say is, trustee Jones, as the chairman of the Committee for Financial Responsibility and, and, uh, Government Transparency, the village manager stayed late at your committee meeting to iron this out and discuss it, and you didn't even acknowledge her.
No, she didn't, no, she didn't, what are you talking about?
She works nine to five.
Where was I, I was here.
You were the chair of the meeting.
We had, we had a meeting.
Trustee Jones, trustee Jones, please, please, trustee Jones. Trustee Jones, was the village manager at your Financial Accountability and Government Transparency Committee meeting?
I acknowledged that, and I just said that.
Okay, so what about making it up?
She could have talked, I didn't give her the floor, I thought, I said, hey, you have a few minutes, just chime in, take the floor.
So we have to, so everybody has to go through two more board meetings of this discussion that's already in the budget, because you, as the chair of a committee, didn't acknowledge to talk about it.
Yes, if that's, if that's where we, yes, let's, let's talk about it, it's not a big deal, our committee, it's a big deal.
I, I not, I explained it, it's in the budget.
All right, we'll, all right.
It's a very easy deal. Does anyone else want to say anything before we call the roll?
No one has any comments, I'll just.
Please call the roll. Trustee, trustee Sanchez.
So trustee Jones, I guess it's directed towards you. You acknowledge that you didn't give her the floor to apologize at your financial meeting?
I, because it wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda. So I, I, so what I said is, okay, during the meeting, I'll give you a few minutes, this is not, this is not at the top of, since it wasn't on the agenda, we can't give a recommendation to the board.
Correct.
And it's what, was what I mentioned. So I was like, you wanna get a few minutes, I have a text message, I mean, I, I, I said that you could have a few minutes. I'm saying, I didn't go out and say, oh, uh, village manager, you got the floor, no, you wanna discuss something. I, I forgot it, because I was going across the agenda, it wasn't about trying to avoid it. So I'm saying, if we can have that conversation, like, it's fine, I wanna have it, I'm just saying, but, but aside from that, we agreed that we weren't making any final decisions, why are we ignoring it? Like, why are we ignoring the fact that we just said this was the structure? And now you're escaping it for what? I don't understand that.
Okay, thank you trustee, thank you trustee Jones. I think we're at twenty-five minutes into discussing this. So there, there is, there has been discussion. Trustee Peppers?
Yeah, we did agree that we would discuss things before we bring it to a vote. And we did agree as a board that we would do that before we bring it to a meeting.
So we've been discussing it for twenty-five minutes?
Committee as a whole.
The committee as a whole.
You came up with this, it was your idea, it's all your own rules.
I don't know what else we would discuss, the point of, point of order, like, seriously. Like, literally, we have spent twenty-five minutes discussing something that's already in the budget. There are not multiple cars that need to be discussed, there are not other financials that need to be discussed right now. We are literally talking about this memo to, there, 'cause she's moving, she's moved. Like, she, October first will have moved. I don't know what more discussion we would have about the fact that something is currently in the budget to be done. The car currently that was the village manager is in community development department, because their car's no longer working. That we should be budgeting for a car in the next fiscal year, which is not the discussion right now. That we do, that we are doing inventory right now on all cars, there is no current car to give her. Trustee, I'm sorry, attorney Jerusik.
The manager's memo was your packet. Uh, the recommendation is to direct the attorney to approve, or to draft an addendum to the contract effective October one. So the only vote you're taking tonight is really preliminary, to set the wheels in motion. If you voted on that approval tonight, you're, you're not approving anything other than drafting the addendum. It will come to committee as a whole, and then it will be approved at the subsequent board meetings. There would be opportunity to run it through the process, as everybody, um, you know, agreed to. You're not taking a final decision to authorize an expenditure tonight. If I could just put a fine point on that, and that might help us move forward. So it will, it will come back to the committee as a whole.
Mayor?
Trustee Sanchez?
With that being said, I motion that the attorney draft an addendum to.
We have a manager's. We have a motion from trustee Lightford, and a second from trustee Reyes Plummer.
Oh, I apologize.
And to accept the memo, and to get the draft, so that we can get a draft to read, to talk about in the committee as a whole, and then so that we can actually vote on it on October nineteenth at the next board meeting, that is what.
So that was the plan?
That's what the memo says.
So why do we waste?
I don't know, but that's, that's exactly what the memo says, to direct the attorney to draft the memo, like, that's, so. That's, that's what, read, I don't have to stop, read. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez?
Aye.
Trustee Reyes Plummer?
Aye.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Lightford? Trustee Peppers?
Aye.
Trustee Brandon?
No.
And Mayor Booker?
Aye.
Motion here.
All right. Eleven, village attorney report, none. Twelve, trustee committee reports. Um, so all of the trustees have established their meeting dates. The calendars and the agendas are posted on the Village of Maywood website. Um, looking forward to having great discussion. The trustees and the co-chairs, uh, look for community feedback, community engagement, community involvement. So if you go to the Village of Maywood website, you can see all of the various different agendas, so that we can start discussing these things at committee as a whole. And once we discuss them at the committee as a whole, bring them back to the board to vote on. All right? Thirteen, omnibus agenda, uh, need a motion to approve?
Motion not approved.
It's been a motion to approve by trustee, uh, Sanchez, and seconded by trustee Lightford. Are there any questions? All right, can we please read, it's not that long anymore. Just, can we please read A through I?
Give me one second, my, um, board will premiere this. Omnibus agenda item letter A, approval of warrant list number two zero zero five one seven through September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of two million, two hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and four cents. Letter B, approval of September seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, monthly finance report. Letter C, a resolution authorizing and consenting to a Cook County Class Seven C property tax rate incentive designation for the real property commonly known as one-two-one-five South First Avenue, Mid-Illinois, and identify its property index numbers, one-five dash one-four dash two-zero-four dash zero-zero-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero, and fifteen dash fourteen dash two-hundred-four dash zero-one-zero dash zero-zero-zero-zero, Little Bear Holdings LLC. Letter D, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of an investment in Cook, connecting Cook County grant for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, and execution of a related intergovernmental agreement with Cook County for Phase Two engineering services. The project is street improvements to Nineteenth Avenue from Madison Street to Oak Street. Letter E, license and release hold harmless and indemnification agreement for non-exclusive temporary use permit for use of the village-owned property. Village property Jim, at the two-hundred South Fifth Avenue building, Maywood Park District and School Board of Maywood, Malos Park, Robeview School District, number eight-nine. Letter F, a resolution authorizing the approval and execution of an independent contractor agreement for electrical inspection services. Consultant is Jimmy Kiff Marcus. Letter G, uh, CSAC music performance license for municipalities, version twenty-twenty-one. Letter H, ordinance amending section thirty-one point twenty-one, board and fire police commissioners of the Maywood Village, code regarding adopting a lateral hiring program for entry-level police officers. Letter I, ordinance amending chapter seventy-two, stopping, standing, and parking in chapter seventy-six parking schedules of Title Eight, I'm sorry, Title, uh, Six, Title Seven traffic code, including schedule four, limited parking of the Maywood. of title eight, I'm sorry, title five, six, title seven traffic code, including schedule four, limited parking of the Maywood Village Code. Can we please call the roll?
Trustee Sanchez?
Aye.
Trustee Reyes Plummer?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Lightford? Trustee Peppers?
Aye.
Trustee Brandon? Mayor Booker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, thirteen, new business. Thirteen A, discussion and recommendation of resolution authorizing the approval and execution of an independent contractor agreement for electrical inspection services with cover memo from Plaidthorpe Jenkins dated September first, twenty twenty-one. Um, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, trustee Reyes Plummer is second. Uh, trustee Lightford, are there any questions? Thirteen? Okay. Fourteen A, discussion and recommendation of resolution authorizing and consenting to Cook County Class Seven C property tax rate incentive designation for the real property commonly known as twelve-fifteen South First Avenue, Maywood, Illinois, and identified as property index numbers fifteen-fourteen, two-zero-four, zero-zero-one, zero-zero-zero-zero, and fifteen-fourteen, two-zero-four, zero-one-zero, zero-zero-zero-zero, Little Bear Holdings LLC with a cover memo, Plaidthorpe Jenkins, dated September first, twenty twenty-one. If there are no questions, I need a motion.
Motion approved, second.
Motion to approve by trustee Sanchez, seconded by trustee Lightford. Are there any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez?
Aye.
Trustee Reyes Plummer?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Lightford?
Aye.
Trustee Peppers?
Aye.
Trustee Brandon?
Aye.
Mayor Booker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That's the, like, the Gulf Gas Station that has the closed-down car wash. Right. Uh, fourteen B, discussion and recommendation of a resolution authorizing acceptance of an investment in Cook County, connecting Cook County Grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-one in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, and execution of related intergovernmental agreement with Cook County for Phase Two Engineering Services, project street improvements to Nineteenth Avenue from Madison Street to Oak Street, with cover memo, Plaidthorpe Jenkins, uh, September twenty twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by trustee Lightford.
I have a question there. Fourteen B is not on. Am I looking at?
So the first one, the first one you read was correct. But then when you revamped it, you read thirteen C.
Gotcha. Okay, so, okay, got it. All right, so then we're, um, old business. Fifteen, sixteen, board trustee comments, none. Seventeen, for discussion items only. Uh, eighteen, uh, closed session. Uh, A, pending litigation. B, probable. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, and dismissal of specific employees of the public body.
Motion to go on to follow reading sessions, discussion and litigation. Five, I L C S, one-twenty-dash-two-dash-C-dash-eleven. And item B, probable coneminate litigation.
No.
Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body, five I L C S, one-twenty-dash-two-dash-C-dash-one.
All right, uh, motion. Can I get a second? Second, motion by trustee Brandon, second by trustee Sanchez. Are there any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Sanchez?
Aye.
Trustee Reyes Plummer?
Aye.
Trustee Jones?
Aye.
Trustee Lightford?
Aye.
Trustee Pepper?
Aye.
Trustee Brandon?
Aye.
Mayor Booker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Perfect. All right, everyone. Thank you so much. Have a blessed.